It is 6:00 PM. We will begin our meeting with the annual budget hearing for amended fiscal year '23. And we will open the hearing. We'll start with public comment.
Well, not yet.
Not yet. You're good.
Unless you want to talk about the budget.
If you want to talk about a budget, you feel free.
Yeah. Would you like to go over the changes a little bit, Marcy?
Sure. I'm happy to do that if it's time. If, um, if we turn to the, the budget section in the package, it's on the on start page fifty-nine. I am, um, requesting that we amend the general fund, special revenue fund, and food service fund, and the student activities fund, those four funds. These, um, all four are needing to be increased. The general fund, um, the primary purpose for the reason for increase is the result of our increased insurance premiums for property and casualty. It, um, came in much higher, that $600,000 amount. So, um, if you look at the, the general fund, I'm requesting an increase of $900,000. There's, um, spread out amongst, um, multiple categories there. The increase is going to, um, per casualty, there's a thirteen point five three percent or four million dollars. The, um, special revenue funds, it's necessary to increase that by a hundred thousand, and that simply is a function of needing to adjust the purposes of those dollars. When, uh, the auditors come in, they look at the different, um, thousands, two thousands, three thousands, four thousands, and five thousands. They're looking at instruction, instructional support, general support, and then the architectural, the operations, um, and maintenance side of the buildings. And so they're looking at those categories in total, and I had dollars that could be shifted between those categories and special fund, and then the need to increase by a hundred thousand. That's but that's simply being, um, a need based upon additional federal funds that, um, came into the district. So that's the offset, the offset there. The, um, student activity, food service, let's go back there first. The, the food service operations, that one needs to be increased by 200,000. And that's simply as a function of the, the change in costs from budget based upon students all being fully, fully paid and, and not offering the, the free meal that we were offering the prior year to, to all students. And then the, the student activity fund is, is very unique in that that's solely based on fundraising of our students. So students raise money, it's deposited into the activities fund, and then they turn around and expect dollars out. And there was an additional $200,000 spent based upon what was, um, fundraised than what was initially budgeted. So those four funds, um, needing to have some adjustments paid. You have any questions? Thank you.
All right. We will close the hearing and move on to our regular meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the name of the
Are there any changes to the agenda?
We do not have any changes.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All opposed?
The agenda is approved. Next up is informational proposals. We will begin with our annual recognition of developmental delay classification.
So if you see in page six of your board packet, this is a yearly memorandum that we receive in regards to definition or chapter seven rules for services for children with disabilities. And this is something that yearly, uh, we approve on that basis. Uh, actually not approve, it's a memorandum, informational review, and this is how we then go about defining development delay, uh, throughout there. So if you haven't got that information in regards to when we reference special education.
Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation by Scott Murphy, the Director of Leadership for the Public Education and Business Coalition.
And you guys, I just want to say thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to come up here and spend a little time with you this evening. Um, I guess I'll say saying thank you for eleven years of working in this district. I had the opportunity to be with a recent attendance through various curriculum directors, uh, I guess even say I'll last month. In jest. But I putting that in front of you simply to say that I've been in town for eleven years in support of your students, in support of the community, in support of your teachers, in support of your parents, and, and that's how I come to you. Um, what I'd like to share with you, Lou, is what I what is the role that I play, how I work in this district. And then I'll bring a little bit from the website because I've been watching, uh, three years for hearings, questions, or on seminars and things like that, that people question. For that conversation. We're just starting with you. My work is really pretty simple. I'm not the only ones bringing some content, I don't bring anything. I don't bring anything to those things. Those are directed by other, other vendors, the state, et cetera. What I bring to you is just thirty-two years of, um, educational background as principal, as director, and I come in to support your leaders, whether it be teacher leaders, whether it be principals, whether it be district folks, to do their work to the highest level to support us. And what that means is some, some context. I work with the principals and they come together on every trip. I come up, I come up for about three days on these trips. We bring all the principals together, um, and we call it a principal PLC. And the idea of that is how can principals build a collegial group such that we're not only working as individual schools, but working as going to count students. And it's really interesting to think about Lingle and Southeast and Torrington as under a single umbrella, even though they are autonomous communities, they, they, they function and kind of exist in certain ways. But we begin thinking about how do we split all kids and how can Lingle folks learn from Torrington folks, learn from Southeast folks, become together and do that sort of work. We talk about things like how do we navigate conflict in our schools? How are we instructional leaders? How do we provide the EBITDA? How do we create systems and structures? How do we manage schools simultaneously to leading schools which are parent, but they're also slightly different? We spend a lot of time in the cities. So we do principal classes. Another space I'm looking at these two over here is in this space right here on every trip, we do collegial groups. And I facilitate those meetings, and what I bring in those sorts of spaces is the ability to navigate adult learners. As teachers, we're most spending the time in the classroom, but how do we support teachers to support other teachers? Every month an agenda, how do we facilitate well? How do we ask really strong questions? How do we create burnout and results in in changed practices and improved practices in the classroom? So we come together as groups in this space right here, um, center diamond, four blocks, six blocks, meeting this. I also work to be a structural facilitators, and I spend time in this building with the district folks. Sit down with Gavin in the transition now with him, thinking about the roles of district and how do districts create systems and guidance for schools such that ownership can be taken at schools for district initiatives and things like that. Different levels of leadership, so I spend time with that group. And probably the biggest of my roles is, is directing the process. On every single trip, I carve out time at each of the schools, whether it be Tyler, or Tim, or Cory, or any of the others. I go to school, we spend about two hours, we spend time in their office. It's their time to have a thought partner. Principalship is kind of almost positioned for you to defend or, or kind of share it, get it out into the system. Sometimes it's nice to have someone process those things you did, so maybe on the edge of teams, and they can just really help you understand the things in challenging situations, and that's not spending time with the schools. We also spend a lot of our time in the school board and classrooms. Biggest, uh, probably belief systems that I would bring into this place and others, as you see, is kind of leadership, kind of direct impact on the way the class is. And they waited for us to answer that question to get in the classrooms. So we walk in classrooms together, not in the thousands of way, but in a understanding of the story on our leadership to those students. I would say those are the four biggest and most what I've been in this district, which where I've been the last eleven years, and that's kind of a compact way of sharing them. On the west, we divert over that space. This is a public comment, and I had to search, uh, some trivia words, but I'll say those are trivia words. I work in Northern Ireland, work in Northwest Colorado. And you guys up here, you know more of Colorado, I'm in Kentucky, so I'm in a wide range of districts and places across the country. And similar kind of questions. So D E I, diversity and equity, I mean, it's brought up in the conference. Really, this stands for E D C, and that space is simply this. Every, each and every student and teacher deserves to get what he or she needs. We look at diversity as a common space, that differences that are brought into the classroom and brought into, uh, our profession are about and actually better care of the system. It also is important for us to recognize that most students coming to our classroom, like a person sitting next to them. And diversity is not the ratio versus you know, diversity. I know in this team, in my experience, it can be part of the diversity. It could be university in more rural, a broken town. It can be students living with grandparents. It can be their kids coming from houses, or if someone's a parson, they all of that diversity and journey to our spaces is completely important for us to understand such that we can move from the space. At winning each and every diversity gap is where you issue this to be successful. And that's that, that's really good, a lot of the it is also favorable outcomes such that we have high expectations for each member of the students. Unable to be a set student or unable of not being successful in previous years doesn't hold water when it comes to the net space. So we have after all, expectations for each another's student. The third one would be then, that it's just simply that we're not that everyone comes to us within our education, anyone who seeks to be a student or a teacher or be part of an education, students deserve to spirit of your student. CIT sits just below that computer, the website, and you're in the mix. As I said, this is my thirty-second year in education. For me, most of my career has started with corporate, with chance of teaching. And everything we got around CIT as I think was teacher, et cetera, was around how to, as I just said, need the needs of diverse populations. And my home is the middle of the hall. And so I started my teaching in very diverse populations, and for us to understand the culture is really important. CIT is obviously listed to the space of critical listening. CIT on our website, I'll say this. We are employed in twenty-six of those students. We're a national organization. The presence of CIT racial issues, biases, oppression are central to districts across the nation. Maybe not, maybe not the elevation of the conversation, but they are with other and people who seek our services. It would be doing for us not to recognize that, but understand it and then be able to partner with people to help them in their quest. Your quest drives my goal. Your quest and your needs, your creative, your goals stress mine. The only other thing I would say that in this CIT is at least on the website, is just recognition on everyone in every group in the history of education sets the opportunities. We can be citizens and organizations who want to ensure that everyone in our committed systems of education the opportunities in our schools, be equipped to be part of this group, and equipped to be part of whatever course. You do strive without the bus, professors, and so by rounding this piece up, we just got to come back to this. I'm not, I'm unique to the challenges and perhaps even the differences that might be between organizations where people seek phases everywhere, whether they're national, or they're local. What I have found in this, in Northern Iowa, that I owe, that's people that's here with you. That agreement, you want to come to focus, and we have to listen, and I found that in my eleven and this district that we've been, we've heard, P E B C, me, I think we've heard on like everything, everything we saw to issue. And so I appreciate having been in the district. I appreciate having sat I appreciate having been able to be in your homes, be in your community, be in conversations with people in this place. I've been a lot of time there, and like, in eleven years, the other person, you're there, this is to everybody, that's me, and I appreciate that. It's a humble next phase. And I hope P E B C, I know P E B C is related, as I use forward, I hope this, that's actually a decision I'm not advocating for. I'm just saying where, where we come from. And I'm looking at you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, I've been on your website a lot. Spend days there.
Who was that?
I said you can spend days on that website.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Read some of your articles and everything.
Yeah.
And, um, I was reading, I got into your definitions and belief statement. Um, and on your belief statement on the how we get into anti-racist and multicultural organizations. And the P E B C kind of rates an organization on where they are as far as um, their beliefs. Um, I believe it gets into upholds. Uh, the lowest rating is like someone that upholds a white supremacy culture, and they have a passive status, co-organization, uh, a symbolic multicultural organization, have six different categories that they rate organizations on. And I was just curious where our school district is rated in those six categories.
Chris, I don't have an answer, but you've never been involved in bringing the district through that system. P E B C is continuing to evolve, to evolve in its work with original issues as we are providing that more and more districts across the country whose work is primarily that. If that there's no barrier of that in this system.
So we're just
I, I can't answer. I've not gone down that path in any of those metrics to either I came in those way.
Yeah, because they, they, it seems like they like to rate organizations on what they, how they feel that they are coming along as far as, um, anti-racial, um, whether inclusive and everything like that. And I was wondering how our school district is rated in those categories on where we stand.
Yeah, I know. I appreciate that. And like I say, I would give you the answer to that stuff. On that, where I would say is P E B C, if contracted to be involved in that sort of conversation with the district, would go down that, that's not for us.
I, if I may interject, I don't know exactly what part. I, I haven't seen that part. But I do know in my experience from the superintendency, there are a lot of ours to state of Wyoming, or even national, there is a desire from districts to ascertain that ranking. And then they would employ or contract with P E B C to do so. We have not done so in the past to ascertain that ranking. And so I don't think that that tool, that I believe that's a tool to use if the district or a district would like to have that information. I'm just taking a wild guess, based on your description, that's what I'm
Yeah, it just says, this represents the ways P E B C will address inequities internal and external stakeholders may do this.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think that's a product that would, it sounds like a product that they offer that we, we have not, um, expressed interest in.
Scott, can I ask you a question then?
Yeah.
So the metrics that we're just kind of putting into, Alexander, are those necessary for you to do the work with this particular district? Or is that designation important to you in, in working with us?
No, the designation is not important to me in work. I'd say the first and foremost thing that's important is the connected values that we share in our town, those from neighborhood, that's the desire to have high quality instruction in their classrooms. That's to me, and posing gaps to keep them up and studying, as I know we've got to talk about now, now achieving today. Those are even metrics that I know you're
I have a question. I just want to consider my appreciation and give us that explanation in that presentation. So, thank you.
I appreciate it. And I really appreciate that, in front of all of you. I wish we had this opportunity. Eleven years is a long time to stand on new people and not, I believe, so I appreciate.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Up next is the update from our business manager, Marcy Keats, on the 2023, 2024 budget.
So we're going to shift a little bit. Uh, the American budget that I referenced prior was for last year. That was the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The twenty-three, twenty-four budget is for the upcoming school year that we are in right now. Historically, we would have been doing that budget hearing tonight. I want to, um, thank you for allowing me to present that next week. What, um, what has happened and, and what is, is occurring is that, um, the state provides what's referenced as a one hundred model. It's a, it's a huge itself spreadsheet that, um, our district information is, is put into taxes and subvaluations, student population revenues, et cetera. I, I put the information into this spreadsheet, and then it comes back and, and it says how much our foundation guarantee is going to be. That being how much we receive from the state. They said there were a couple of changes made as a result of the legislative session that prompted a, um, terrible delay in districts receiving that model. As of today, we still don't have the model. Historically, we've received it, um, by the first of June. The, um, business managers are being forced to, um, still complete budget hearings. They statute states that budget hearings would, um, be held by the third Wednesday of the month. So I, um, did advertise tomorrow's paper will have, um, our information for our budget hearing. We, um, have what I feel is a very solid budget that I will be presenting to you. One of, one of the additional hardships that we have, um, in the state of Wyoming is that we're required to publicize a week prior to the budget hearing in, in a local newspaper. In Torrance, based upon the circulation, the fact that there's only a Wednesday and a Friday paper and the, the deadlines to advertise, I have to have the budget ready ten days prior to actually presenting it to, to you folks. So that's, that's the reason why, um, I asked Mr. Kramer that we, um, extend and, and have a special board meeting next week on, on Wednesday. I'll be presenting a balanced budget, um, to you all that I think is, is very conservative and um, very representative of, of what we should have. But I, I just wanted to to give you a little bit of information as to why we weren't able to be having a hearing this evening.
Thank you, Marcy. Up next is our public forum. First up is Angela Oxner.
Good evening, Vice Chairwoman, Board of Trustees. Thank you for giving me the opportunity today. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Angela Oxner, and I have been the seventh grade science teacher at Torrington Middle School for the past eleven For ten of those years, I have worked directly with the Public Education Misses Coalition, or as more commonly known, E D C. I have come here today to speak about my firsthand experience working with this organization. At the last board meeting, it was decided that our 2023, 2024 district contract with P E B C and our current P E B C Director of Leadership, Mrs. Scott Murphy, would be taken. I was deeply saddened by this decision. The professional development opportunities from E D C that I have participated in have been nothing less than transformative. What I mean by this is that it has transformed my practices as an educator for the better. I was a part of T M S's second P E B C cohort during the 2013, 2014 school year. I worked alongside our then facilitator, Mrs. Nancy Meredith, and several of my colleagues. We met regularly throughout the school year to engage professional development. Together, we attended the P E B C Institute in Denver and had the opportunity to visit inner city classrooms to see the P E B C teacher framework in action, and it was amazing. As a result of my participation on this cohort, I learned about the importance of creating classroom norms and routines and including students in this process. I learned about metacognition and how to help students think about their own thinking to become stronger learners. I learned about Socratic seminars, the workshop model, and how to create more collaborative and hands-on learning opportunities for students. If I have had your child in class, which we're around seven of you, I have. They have reprieved benefited from the knowledge that I have gained from my time in I use it every day. Since my experience with the T M S cohort, I have been working with Mr. Scott Murphy to become a stronger leader in this district, specifically in regards to my senior leadership. Mr. Murphy has worked for our school district with the deepest amount of professionalism, compassion, wisdom. I leave meetings we have with Mr. Murphy feeling renewed and inspired to be a better teacher and leader for my students and colleagues. During the ten years I have worked with P E B C, Mrs. Meredith and Mr. Murphy, I have never set an agenda involving the controversial topics discussed in the last board meeting. I believe these to be conclusions that would draw me out from any firsthand experience actually working with E D C's website also discovered their core values as an organization, and I would like to read those to you now. We value unique lived experiences and assets of each and every market. We value cultivating relationships to optimize in the past. We value diversity, equity, and inclusion. We value lifelong continuous learning for understanding and growth. We value leveraging data and the assets of our team to inform our practices. These values mirror our district vision, caring people that lead, empower, and inspire all students to achieve excellence. So, Mrs. the Budget's Chairwoman and Board of Trustees, I would urge you to reconsider the Gochin County School District one contract with P E B C and Mr. Scott Murphy. Submit the opportunity to learn from this great organization, with the huge loss for our administrators, educators, and ultimately our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Up next is Gage Gibson. Thank you, Angela. Up next is Gage Gibson.
Good evening, Vice Chair and Chairs. My name is Gage Gibson. And I'm a recent graduate of Lingle Park High School. I had the privilege of being the student council president of our school. I've heard a speech upon Scott Murphy and what we were, were. Throughout the school year, we as a council had goals bigger than ourselves. We just, we didn't know what to do. We wanted something to change. We didn't know how to do it. And one of our big goals was missing assignments. School culture, meaning bringing everyone together. We wanted our community to be a little bit stronger and. Mr. Murphy inspired twelve students. Me and myself and my council. And we wanted big goals. I want to change the school. Another one of my students wanted to bring academic literature to show that other students be. Don't, not just the athletics, our academics. And then we had our, one of our biggest projects was our food initiative. Where we saw a local problem with our school budget, with the, with the non-free lunch. Not a lot of people did. Pay for that. So a lot of students couldn't get food and teachers were paying out of pocket. Just so that they were giving up their lunch so that they could. With the guidance of Scott Murphy, he helped us, he led us in the right way where we wanted to go. And with his help and the help of our local, our librarian, Jackson. We got in touch with the person, the employee. And she brought us in and we had a meeting. Her, she set us on a, on five thousand dollars. And if we reached that, she would back whatever we had. And so after that meeting, we were, we wanted to achieve this goal. Weeks later, we met Scott. And we were kind of figuring out ideas, ideas how we wanted to do this. And we came up with food at parent-teacher conferences. We had Italian soda for students. And. I don't remember where we came out to be. It was around, I think, a thousand. Somewhere around that we raised for preschool. And. We had a great meeting there at the end of the year where the whole school came and wanted to thank us. But we felt like they needed to thank. And everyone of them. And to finish it off, I, before I left Lingle. I got a lot of thanks from fellow students on what I did to change the school culture. But I, I did tell them that it was not just me, it was my fellow council, Scott Murphy. And. Thank you for listening. I hope you please consider rehiring Mr. Scott Murphy. Because I believe he changed our culture and I think he can lead this school. In the direction we, what students, environments we want. Thank you.
Thank you, Gage. Up next is Erin Hesters.
Okay, Vice Chairperson, Chair, Superintendent Kramer and members of the board. I'm Erin Hesters. I've been a teacher in Lingle for thirteen years. She, I've been a teacher for thirteen years. Eight of those are Goji County School Districts. I'm also the student council sponsor at Alpha. And I was the Goji County Teacher. In the spring of twenty twenty-two. One thing that I want to start off with is that I appreciate that we have. A space such a public comment where anybody can bring ideas and concerns to the board. That can be considered thoughtfully. And I'm also grateful that we're in a space where we can have conversation. I do feel like perhaps the conversation. I guess I should have mentioned that I'm here to speak on behalf of my friend Scott. I assume you probably gathered that, but I felt like I missed it. I appreciate that I, that we have some time to talk about this because I would really like to leave any concern that people have or. Any sort of like political propaganda that's maybe being perceived as being pushed by Scott Murphy or P E B C. But that's never been my experience. I've worked with Scott in three different ways as a legal leader. He's also been a coach in my classroom and he also, as Gage mentioned, did a lot of work with us in our student council. I'm optimistic that you guys received some emails from teachers regarding the work that Scott Murphy has done with our legal groups. I'm seeing some head shaking. Did you guys receive information from teachers about that? I didn't want to reiterate it if you received a lot of information regarding that. There was a couple of things that I wanted to mention that I think. Need to be heard. I worked with Scott as a legal leader post-COVID. So we're coming back from. All that that was and Scott taught us how important it was to be grounded. To be present and to be genuine and authentic in front of our students. And I hope that as you heard him speak, he kind of got that vibe from him because I get it every time that I'm around him. And I can tell you that as a teacher, there was nothing more, there's nothing better than I could have heard at that point in my teaching career. Teaching during the COVID, during COVID and, you know, coming back into the classroom. Was, it felt insurmountable. I mean, looking back on it, I. It's amazing that we're all still like, we kind of made it through that. And Scott was there to help our district become unified, kind of talk about what our struggles were. He helped us avoid what we were struggling with as professionals. And he listens, he helps us stay deeper. And the word that I had was honestly the exact same as what Angela shared. It was transformational for our district. So I'm, I'm hopeful that you received similar comments in your emails about Scott for his legal leader. I do want to talk a little bit too about my work with Scott. As I've been pointing to my classroom as a sharpshooter. So I think God, it was before COVID because I don't remember any of those things being in our space when we're having conversations. So during that time, I was meeting with Mr. Gilchrist, Mrs. Kim Cooper, who's a math teacher in Lingle as well. Mr. Spear for that time was an extracurricular facilitator and. Scott would come and meet us occasionally. And he really helped us. Really dig deep into improving our math instruction. We, as legal groups, spent loads of time linking up data. And so we knew that we had gaps that we needed to fill, but being aware of the gaps and then knowing what to do about the gaps, which is probably different things. And Scott really helped us, like, put some pieces into action. So Scott would come into my classroom and he has this really unique observational style where he's kind of in the back, he's kind of blending in. And he's, after, you know, he's watching two lessons, then they kind of debrief and he's asking me questions. He's asking me about techniques, techniques I use, and he has this phenomenal coaching style of really. Getting a person to think genuinely about their practice. And it, as Angela said, it was transformational for me. He's like a Jedi master. Like, if you could see this man in action, he just gets it. So that was another experience that I've had with him. He really did help me have better active. Is my time up? That's a great homework. I urge you to continue working, letting us work with this person. He's done great things for me, he's done great things for my classroom. I wish I could speak more about the leadership he had with my student council. Sorry to prepare enough that I didn't want to be so long-winded about the potential for him. So, please keep him on board. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Erin. Up next is Tony Goulart.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time. I'm sorry I missed the beginning. But as a casual role, I wanted to, I wanted to be a doctor as I put it, well, I'm a reporter for you this week. So I'm really sure that I understood P E B C and what their definitions are of, of what they package for our district. And I'm not at all aware of Mr. Murphy's work is. So my issue is strictly with P E B C and what it is that they do. To make sure I understood it, I wanted to know what their definition was of D E I, because that's what we're talking about at the end of the day. That is the, the. Helping children achieve critical consciousness, that's a radiology you're gonna have to be familiar with. We won't have time to dive into that today, but we certainly can if we'd like to in the future. But D E I, D E I's definitions led me down a road where I, I wanted to make sure I understood what inclusion was. And something happened on the way to inclusion, a link on their website, and I have a page here that, that I can show you that is a printout. A screenshot of their page that has the links in their descriptions of the what, why, and how. They achieve their belief statement of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Under the how portion of it, there is in blue highlighted white supremacy cultural norms. Click on that, takes you to a website called Show for Racial Justice. Okay, so if you go there and say that you're new to this website, click here. So I click for the new guys. And immediately brought up a picture of about nine individuals sitting in front of a New York City precinct building. Wearing shirts that range from Black Lives Matter to Defund the Police. Tell me what that has to do with inclusion and our thinking. That is what P E B C is speaking in. A lot of the verbages they use, you might not be familiar with, critical pedagogy. I had to learn what, what pedagogy was. It has its origins from a Portuguese gentleman, the Paulo Freire. One of my Portuguese cultural background, I know a thing or two about Portuguese Marxism. What, what John Dewey, the damage that John Dewey did to our American educational system. Paulo Freire, or Fraria, if you might pronounce it in English, if you forgive it, you can't follow your Rs. He basically told John Dewey, oh, my dear. So much so that virtually every school in America, every public school is Apollo Prairie School. Virtually a hundred percent positive in universities. That's what maybe you need to know. That's in the individual media research in his book, Pedagogy of the Opponent. Then again, is what P E B C is promoting through their website. Regardless of the positive relationship, and I have no doubt of the positive in Mr. Murphy. Would you even want our vending machines in our school filled by somebody or a company that was affiliated with David Duke and K K K? If all they're doing is throwing the vending machine, that'd be outrageous. And you'd be rightfully outraged. Why would we allow them to have any business center or god nodding? With a company who has stated purpose, they've made it plain in every link and every aspect of, of what they describe. They are fully invested in this cultural Marxist helping our children achieve. A critical. A critical theory about everything. It's not a race theory. Race theory is different tree. Don't build a tree in the way that you see in the forest. It's a critical theory for everything, critical theory for everything that, that we hold as traditional, we hold as valuable. It's the idea that if you destroy everything, then the utopia will naturally rise up out of the ashes. Now, I realize that in our school district, we're probably not seeing that immediately. But why are we doing business for the company when that's their, their stated purpose? That's their goal. That's the water they're swimming. That's my concern. What's the alternative to P E B C? The alternative is. Teachers that invest themselves, invest their wisdom, their knowledge, and they're harping their children either flatly paying property taxes for, for that teaching. All day long and twice on Wednesdays. What's the alternative to teaching children that their value only comes from the group they identify with? Heaven forbid we teach our children that their value comes from the fact that they are in the visual state of the image of God. And that they are not valued because they belong to a group. Their value, their value is brought to the group by who they are in the beginning. Let's teach that. Let's have an alternative to allowing our children to be exposed to a critical theory. For achieving a, a religious aspect that none of us did. Thank you for your time. If any of you would like to speak with me afterwards, I can show you the information on my dot com. It's all readily available. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Up next is Tom Massey.
Thank you. And again, I'm not going to ask for any time of people that I don't know. But I looked up P E B C's website. And you have. Props on top that said about, I scroll down. Diversity, equity, inclusion. That is code. For CRT. The core ID, idea behind CRT is not equal opportunity, you can live, liberty, pursuit of happiness. CRT, that's Martin Luther King's dream, that Americans snap to judge by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. You say, whoa, is it that bad? The answer is yes, around the world, yes, but Americans are different. They are standing up to CRT. They are giving voice to seven hard truths. First, America is about individual equality, not group equity. The idea behind CRT that America is just groups defined by skin color. They do not see America as individuals with separate souls, goals, and dreams. And God given attributes. Of course, CRT's premise is false. We are born, thanked, lived, dreamed, and awakened each day as individuals, not as a group. We might be divided in a million ways, age, gender, height, weight, et cetera. And yes, race, but we are individuals. As a self-governing people, we have a constitution. That recognizes our individuality, gives each the same rights under law. Our differences give us different paths to success, defined by free will. The government's job is to get out of the way, not bulldoze us. With fourth item, our constitution is also a self-correcting amendment. While the first amendment's paying with tariff, others, such as the thirteenth ending slavery. And the nineteenth giving women the vote, paying later. So that is CRT's first line, black, white, brown, tan, or none of the above. We have individual rights, no group equity in our constitution. Second, equal opportunity is not equal outcome. The constitution as amended gives all Americans an equal shot. If we fail to reach perfection, the goal is to keep trying. An equal shot at education, employment, property ownership, et cetera. The goal is equal protection, the right to rise or fail, to succeed or fall, and try again, equal under the law. This is the opposite of CRT's guaranteed outcome, materially leveling by group. The idea behind CRT is concentrating power to equalize health. Regardless of who earns wealth, returns on hard work and trust in the individual or not. Third, CRT is itself racist. CRT not only assigns all whites reasons by one race to another. It's a jet black and white citizens to equal education, employment, ideas, and industry. And effort cannot attain similar outcomes. Why? Because the principle of merit-based achievement is projected in favor of these first races. Easier to hate and blame than love and support. That approach is anti-American, ironically, right with racial rhythm. Rather than faith in the possible in the individual, CRT defines the possible is impossible and blames that embrace. For the CRT crowd, raised all the manner, pitting one against another. Teaching the assumption that we are not equal in God's eyes. Teaching the assumption that we are not equal in God's eyes or the eyes of the law, and never can equal each other's eyes. Have you ever heard of anything more pathetic than teaching children resentment, blame, and helplessness? Fourth, CRT denies upward mobility, CRT denies the idea that our work and equal protection succeed. Upward mobility is the gaping hole in Marcus' pocket, draining into the power. But generally, to believe in CRT, you must believe that skin color defines your abilities, see. Fifth, CRT immorally pushes intergenerational guilt. It's a fraud because the only way to justify putting one race down for another and openly teaching resentment is to end the past and the present. The premise is wrong, intentional infliction of intergenerational guilt, making successors responsible for ancestors is fundamentally immoral. Morality centers on individual accountability, not accountability of distant progenitors. Sixth, CRT empowers inmates to persecute. Every Marxist country in the world, every country that has ever been racial, ethnic, religious, or economic groups are blaming for society's goal. Sorry, I couldn't finish. Thank you.
Thank you Tom. Up next is E, recommended items. First is our consent agenda. Under which approve minutes of the June thirteenth twenty twenty-three regular meeting. Approve monthly bills as presented, including the end-of-year bills paid as per board authorization. Accept W D E Perkins Vocational Education Grant for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four in the amount of fifty-six thousand, three hundred and six dollars and forty-four cents. Approve contracting with Heartland Payment Systems for renewal of district food services, point-of-sale system, payment processing systems, and free and reduced application system for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year in the amount of eight thousand fourteen dollars from the Food Service Fund. Approve official representatives to W H S A A and approve membership in W H S A A for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year as follows. Trenton High School, Gabe Bartlett, Lingle Ford Laramie High School, Mike Lashley, and Southeast High School, Matt Burlington. Approve the district portions of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four elementary and secondary student handbooks as presented. These were emailed on July sixth, twenty twenty-three, building portions of student handbooks will be presented for approval at the July nineteenth special meeting. Approve contracting with overhead door company in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents for the purchase of a rolling coil door for Southeast School concessions from the Capital Construction Fund. Approve purchase exceeding five thousand for the purchase of district air filters from Scan Air in the amount of five thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-six cents, this is from the General Fund Building Operations and Maintenance. Approve contracting with Goshen County Construction to create an opening in the T H S ag shop wall in the total amount of seven thousand four hundred and ten dollars from the major maintenance fund. And finally, approve purchase of a golf simulator for the Trenton High School from Top Shelf Golf in the amount of five thousand forty-nine dollars funded through the Bowden Barnes Memorial. Do we have a motion? A second?
Sorry.
Question?
Which wall is that, the vocational, eh?
So that is the wall in between the welding shop and that other shop area there. So the welders are on that far side, the main shop area there has that about, oh, it's a ninety-five percent wall there. And there's the opening, probably ten feet, but majority is stuck there.
Okay, I was thinking the classroom when I ran up to the, I was thinking, oh.
Yeah, yeah, that's the other side.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We are now on Okay, we did have a late public comment come in, so we are Oh, never mind, then we'll just continue on as we work. So we are on to number two, old business, the first item up for discussion is the tabled item from our last board meeting, consider approval of contracting with P E B C. The recommendation, this item was tabled at the June twenty twenty-three board meeting. Approve contracting with P E B C for sixteen days of professional learning services to improve instructional leadership for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year in the amount of sixty-four thousand. This comes from Title I and Title II funds. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the contract with P E B C.
Is there a second? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Let's try again with a show of hands, so, all those in favor? Opposed? So it is a split vote, the motion fails. Um, up next, B, consider approval of proposed revisions to district policy, policy forty-three oh-two retiree rehire. The recommendation is approve the proposed revisions to district policy forty-three oh-two retiree rehire is presented on second and final reading, do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Seconds.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. C, consider approval of proposed revisions to district policy forty, fifty-one, thirty-one point two-one student discipline. Recommendation, approve the proposed revisions to district policy fifty-one, thirty-one point two-one, student discipline consequences six through twelve, as presented on second and final reading, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item D, consider approval of proposed revisions to district policy fifty-one, twenty-one, grading six through twelve. The recommendation is to approve the proposed revisions to district policy fifty-one, twenty-one, grading six through twelve as presented on second and final reading, do we have a motion?
Just move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number three, new business, A, consider approval of amended fiscal year twenty, twenty-two, twenty twenty-three district budget. Recommendation is to approve the amended fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget as presented, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next is B, consider approval of offering certified staff employment. The recommendation, approve offering a teaching contract to Shelley Rasta as a special education teacher at Southeast schools. A teaching contract to Lori Jones as an instructional facilitator, a teaching contract to Aurelius Palomo as a special education teacher at Lingle Ford Laramie Middle High School, and an employment agreement to Aaron Buchanan as a speech-language pathologist for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, oh, I, I went too fast that time, go ahead Lori, yes.
Quick question, Mr. Kramer, for Miss Buchanan, um, offering speech-language pathology, is that to all three schools or is it one in particular?
So primarily, there will be, we have multiple speech pathologists throughout the district. Her responsibility will most, will mostly entail Lingle Ford Laramie and also Trenton High School.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item C, consider approval of contracting for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four staff professional development services. The recommendation is to approve contracting with Institute for Multisensory Education, I M S E for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four staff professional development and coaching services from September one, twenty twenty-three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars plus all related travel expenses, this is from Esther Three Funds, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have some questions on this, it's a lot of money. Um, so we're having two people from Michigan coming to, um, coach our teachers, correct?
Not Michigan, no.
That's where the company, where they put them, the, the, the teachers themselves, because they're going, we're gonna pay
I believe Bain and I believe Candy is from Virginia.
Okay. Anyway, the reason I was concerned about this is we're gonna pay these two people, each one of them two thousand dollars per day for coaching. And then we're going to pay all of their transportation, because they're gonna be here for like four or five days, it's time, probably go home, come back. And so we're gonna pay transportation back and forth, plus their rental car, plus their gas. And they're gonna be here for the entire year. There's a schedule, yes, based on the number of days that we have there, there's seven days, that looks at it, they take turns, sometimes it's one on zero at a time, sometimes two at a time, but that's two thousand dollars per day. Plus, then we have to buy the materials and everything for the coaching. And that'll be on the next, on D, which is like thirty-some thousand dollars, uh, thirty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. Uh, and then if something happens where we change and change our minds or whatever, we have to return all that, we don't own those materials. They tell us that we have to keep all the materials confidential and, uh, cannot reveal the materials or their contents to any other person or entity. That if they make, uh, change in scheduling, they can use their sole expression, but if we do so, it costs a thousand dollars. That in liability-wise, limits of liability, they are not responsible for anything, uh, that has to do with in relation to their engagement with us. Um, and that if something does happen where we would have to come or have a, have a problem or cancel our contract or something with us, with them, that we would have to do so under the laws of the state of Michigan and in the state of Michigan. That seems like a contract that I have a problem with signing and putting a liability in our school district and spending that kind of money, kind of, sort of, just part of concern of two thousand dollars per day, per person. Plus all, we have no idea what their airfare, hotel, car rental, and gas is going to be. On top of that, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, I wonder what it was. Plus the thirty-one thousand that we're gonna pay for the materials.
Um.
That sounds like a four hundred thousand dollar bill.
So Mr. Kramer, Mr. Gerby, if you could speak a little bit about I M S E, please?
So we work with I M S E in the last three years, if you may have referenced, uh, the science of reading when the presentation was conducted by Southeast teachers. And our instruction around Morton Gillingham, if you remember the emphasis on that over the last three years. And what we really tried to entail K through five and, uh, taken on that large undertaking of being a leader in reading, um, these are the two coaches that have led that process. These are the two big old individuals who have been in charge of training our own trainers, of training our own coaches. Uh, they are the reason that we have a literacy block scheduled for next year. Um, they are the reason that if we take a look at our Ames Web Data from the spring, that we made huge leaps and bounds. Um, is it expensive? Absolutely. Yes, that is, you're a hundred percent correct, that bill is extremely large. But I would say for the importance of our kids' reading instruction and repenting is well worth it and well spent in the investment of our kids to have the type of instruction that we've seen and the dramatic shift that we've seen in reading, uh, instruction in our district and why other districts are trying to model what we're doing here in Dojon County. Because I can tell you, three years ago, I don't believe other districts were coming to visit us for trainings, coming to visit us for how we're making adjustments. Will it take more time? Absolutely. Is this most likely the last time we will be able to utilize their services this much? To that extent, absolutely, yes. That's why we've tried to incorporate as many local trainers as we possibly could, uh, within conjunction with our literacy grant that we received. Uh, this is one of, these are those three positions, we have an Orton Gillingham coach on staff. We have two, um, literacy coaches who are extremely and heavily invested along with, uh, these two coaches. And they have had a significant investment, uh, in our district. And, uh, I, I absolutely, uh, think that this is the way we need to continue. Um, this is, again, a bill that is not, uh, sustainable, I don't disagree with that in any way, shape, or form. But do believe that for what we wanna see in investment of Esther dollars, this is an absolutely appropriate extension.
Mr. Kramer, if I could ask you a couple of questions on this. So I did sit through the Southeast teachers' presentation about this program and all their positive feedback, how excited they were about it. Obviously, my own children, um, are being the benefits of that. Um, and I also listened to many of the teachers that, that were in Gillingham, I literally have to write it down because that is such a powerful. But I listened to them, this has been the program and how beneficial it has been to them as teachers. What if this board was not to approve this I M S E coaching this year? Are we able to continue with these programs as was thought, or you know, as they have been preparing? What, what would happen if we don't go forward with this?
So we would continue. And like many of the things that we have tried before in Dojon County without support. In about, and I'm, I will try to be a little less dramatic than I think that it would be, but this is my concern. And I'll share my major concern here, is in the past, we've undertaken a lot of things. We've undertaken a lot of things without support and continuous training and wondered why they failed after a couple of years. That is my fear here, is if that we don't, if we don't choose to invest in this training, if we don't choose to invest in the people that will help us work with individual teachers in a way that we have the expertise, we're not there locally to sustain this yet. Is the ultimate goal after these three years to have it sustained in a part and a great lead in our district where this is who we are? Yes, absolutely. Do I feel that this gets us closer to that? Yes, I absolutely do, uh, because of the investment these two coaches have made, uh, in our community and the other aspect of what we wanna do and what we wanna be as a district in regards to the science of reading and how that needs to be instructed. One of the biggest components that we spent the first two years on was specific Orton Gillingham instruction. That is thirty minutes of a ninety-minute reading block. Over this last, tail end of this last year, we focused on building those literacy blocks in each individual classroom and each individual building. The implementation of that is going to take place this school year. I feel it is really important that we have these coaches, along with our facilitators and along with our O G instructional coach. Helping to coach and instruct little things that will have come up in the literacy block that will create challenges to that instruction. And by having those experts readily available and also making those same observations in classrooms. That's the power that we have to help teachers is by having them in the classroom. What we did over the last three years by I M S E and how we structured the coaching, coaching, we specifically modeled Eureka Math to be implemented in the same way. And the reason that we did that is because for so often in education, we spend this large amount upfront to invest in a program and we train teachers for about a week. And then we say, you got it. Go in your rooms and do what you do, and if you're new, you might get lucky enough and we will train you your first year, but we won't probably revisit it. This model supports what we need to do for teachers in continuous learning, not the expectation that in five short days, you have something that has taken fifteen, twenty years for some. fifteen, twenty years for some of these coaches to master and providing that support, just like we do in other entities, in professionalism pieces outside of education, we provide the continued support that we want to see implemented at the level of expectation that we have of our teachers. And that's what this provides.
Do you have any concerns that if we were not to go forward with this I M S E coaching, that we lose that momentum? And, and I guess my concern would be what message are we sending to the teachers? Is, is that gonna impact their morale, the, the teachers that put their blood, sweat and tears into this thus far, you know? What, what messenger are we sending them?
I would agree. Uh, I think they're with the people that have been involved in this and especially by the best of the last two years in this, that would certainly be a question that I would raise.
Thank you.
Just to touch on that, Lena, I know it has been brought up at public comment and by staff and parents throughout the district, the concerns about the way we have changed curriculum every few years in the past, and then we don't want to use our students as guinea pigs. And I think this would be an example of that, Orton Gillingham is doing phenomenal things for our kids. I have, well, I guess now they're first grader and second grader, and my second grader is reading words that I don't know how she can read, it's phenomenal. So watch what they're doing with our kids. And so I guess my personal feeling would be that we keep going with Orton Gillingham because it's doing great things for our students and our staff, and that's why we're here. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Um, next is D, consider approval of purchase of I M S E courses and digital curriculum materials. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of courses, training and digital curriculum materials for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year from the Institute of Multisensory Education in the total amount of thirty one thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. This is from S R three funds. Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. E, consider approval of contracting for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four staff professional development services. The recommendation is to approve contracting with Great Minds for Eureka Math Squared Professional Development and Coaching Services for district staff for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred dollars. This is also S R three funds. Do we have a motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. F, consider approval of contracting for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four teletherapy services. The recommendation is to approve contracting with Tiny Eye Therapy Services for students, student speech language services via teletherapy at the rate of eighty dollars per hour, not to exceed one hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and forty from August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three through May sixteen, twenty twenty-four. This is from General Fund, Special Education reimbursable. Do we have a motion?
Move.
A second? Discussion?
Are we, I've got a couple of questions. Are we gonna continue to try to get, um, a new, um, person hired that does this, the, the uh, language services, because we have one, right? We couldn't, we didn't.
We have multiple in the district. Yes, but we do utilize the Tiny Eye Therapy Services for some of those students. Um, I would, yeah. This is Nicole, do you wanna chime in there and just kind of explain what the goal of and, and reason?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So, um, we've had a posting for speech therapist since last May that we were trying to fill in order to replace the majority of Tiny Eye Services. Then we had a retirement this year, so that gave us two positions. Fortunately, we were able to fill one, but we're still working on pretty much the one we, we've had posted since May. And then, you know, I know there was a question earlier about, um, our in-person Erin, Ms. Buchanan that we hired. She is actually gonna serve all of the Southeast students in K five at Wingle. Uh, we want to have that in-person therapist with our youngest students. Um, and so that will kind of hit that need and then we'll be using Tiny Eye at, uh, Wingle Middle School through high school, Torrington High School, Torrington Middle Schools. Um, I do see us having an ongoing relationship with them because we also provide speech services to Valley Christian students who qualify and sometimes we have homeschool students and it works beautifully for that environment. Prior to having Tiny Eye, we would have to transport students to Lincoln or Trail to get those services and it just gets really complicated. So I do see, um, a much reduced but continuing relationship with them. But ultimately, to answer your question, um, we are trying to, um, fill that. In fact, I was just hopping to our website to see, make sure that's still posted there. Are there any other questions on that I can answer?
I think you answered the other question I have about, uh, Valley Christian and apartment schools and such being able to access that, um, service as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item G, consider approval of contracting for district physical therapy services. Recommendation, approve contracting with North Platte Physical Therapy for District Physical Therapy Services from August first, twenty twenty-three through July first, twenty twenty-five at the rate of seventy-five dollars per hour for direct and indirect services from the General Fund, Special Education reimbursable. Do we have a motion?
Yes, we do.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. H, consider approval for contracting for Occupational Therapy Services. The recommendation is to approve contracting with Banner Health for District Occupational Therapy Services from August first, twenty twenty-three through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five at the rate of seventy-five per hour for direct and indirect services and approve superintendent to sign contract when received. This is from General Fund, Special Education reimbursable. Do we have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
A, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I, consider approval of district gate admission prices for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Recommendation is to approve maintaining, approve maintaining gate admission prices for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year at the rate of five dollars per person excluding district students and employees and twenty-five dollars per year for the annual admission pass per district policy thirty-six fifty-one point one. This is from gate receipts and admissions. Do we have a motion? A second? Discussion?
Much, why do we charge in terms of the name of the state of Nebraska? Oh, of course, the answer actually then specifics to it. This is the second year that we moved that price to go ahead.
Our, our prices were two dollars per person and, um, twenty dollars for an activity pass. The, the idea of the, um, gated mission is that that helps fund our cost of officials as well as our, um, culminating event travel expenses. The, um, receipts that we receive, um, and we received, um, thirty-five thousand this last year in, in gate admission. That, um, that is in addition or, or separate from culminating events. So when we host regionals or any sort of WHSA qualified, um, event, WHSA, um, collects all of those receipts and we receive a small portion that, that is not figured into this.
Marcia, I think I know this answer, but I don't, I don't want to speculate. But do you have any idea what percentage of our gate goes towards the entire expense of our extracurricular expenditures?
Mm-hmm. We, um, we budget and, and I'm just referencing officials and culminating events, travel.
This isn't even coaching?
No, just.
Which would be.
That's, that's, that's even larger. I mean, if, if we look at, at the entire culminating events, we were in single digits as to what we're collecting off the gates.
So if I get, so the admissions only go to the referees and travel, is that what you said?
It, it goes into the general fund budget, but the thought process is that, that that's what we're contributing towards.
So.
We had this, um, we had this conversation, um, one of my very first years here, um, like oh nine or ten. And, um, there was a lot of conversation about should we be charging and does it make sense to charge? And, and at that time, the, the underlying discussion focused on out of state and the fact that we, we play so many schools in Nebraska and Nebraska charges, so there, there was a, a thought or, or consensus that if Nebraska's gonna charge us, we should charge Nebraska. Not saying that's right or wrong, but, but at the time that was kind of, um, the, the overwhelming consensus.
I used to like to go to Nebraska because then I can say, well, Wyoming, we don't have to pay to watch yours.
Is there any way we could change it where, um, our people, our parents, the students, everything in power school didn't have to pay only visitors?
I think with the current pass that we have, that's twenty-five dollars per year is a pretty affordable piece, um, that we offer in relation to to getting into those annual missions, uh, for district events. I think that that certainly, um, it is cost effective and, and provides that, uh, for our individuals to, to attend. We do not, uh, charge for, we do not charge our students also.
I, I was just thinking maybe more so for the people who have a hard time even paying for school lunches, who have loan showing up to the game to watch your kids. Another way to come side.
I think it would be very hard to manage that in that right now, we, we do allow employees who attends free charred as kind of a perk, if you will, with, um, with their employee badge. They, um, are allowed to tender with the family member. So, um, we do allow that for employees. We do have, um, added cost, the, the schools would tell you that they're paying people that actually, um, man the gates and, and take the funds. So I mean, there, there are multiple sides to the conversation.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to do hands? Sorry, we're gonna do hands again. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. J, consider approval of contracting for central office boardroom HVAC replacement. The recommendation is to approve contracting with Wyoming Mechanical Maintenance for HVAC Services to correct the boardroom air conditioning system in the amount of forty thousand from major maintenance. Do we have a motion?
Hmm.
Second? Discussion?
Is that for this building?
That's correct.
Haven't they recently put a newer system up there?
That was, that was this room next door.
Okay. Perfect.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. K, consider approval of purchasing purchase exceeding five thousand for the purchase of district cleaning supplies. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of cleaning and disinfecting supplies and paper products for Lincoln in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. Torrington High School in the amount of two thousand thirty-four dollars and four cents and transportation in the amount of three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-five cents for a total purchase of twelve thousand ninety-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents from Bluffs Facility Solutions. This is from General Fund Custodial. Do we have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next up is F, topics for discussion. If any of the bar members have anything they would like to share now would be a time to do it. I will go first. Um, so I met with Mr. Kramer, our business manager, Marcy Kates, and our new transportation director to discuss some bus route issues that are dependent upon the, um, attendance center boundary lines. We have a couple of students that are right along that line that are going to, uh, attend a center outside of that line, but would like to access busing. And so we discussed some different ways to address that and the ways to best serve our students and the families in our district. Um, and I just lost my train of thought. So if you want to add anything onto that.
So in the, in that discussion, we were talking about admin regulations centered around there was providing some guidance, uh, when we have a request like that. Um, and so when we're looking at the safety of students, when we're looking at what the probability is, when we're looking in in that range, how do we appropriately take a look individually at each, in each situation and make a determination on that, uh, with guidance? And then so that a group made a determination or, or looking at making determinations when we receive a request, uh, of that nature to look at the transportation for those families and if it does not negatively impact the current route, does it make sense then to allow then, for instance, if the bus route is going down that road and it needs to make a complete circle rather than pulling a, um, in a property and turn around and they go right by that house that has requested transportation and it's not on their way, doesn't it make sense to assist families in those situations? And so that's what we're taking a look at to have some guidance, uh, and have some super technical authority in relation to those bus routes and the ability along those lines. Because we have some really unique and interesting lines through the district. And it's because the district has drawn those lines for attendance areas probably thirty years ago. And it was based on where those families resided and going around and asking those families, well, which district would you prefer or which school attendance area would you prefer to be in? And then thirty years ago, making that decision, not knowing how that might impact other families in the future. And so rather than going back and taking a look at the entire district structure, those lines, doesn't it make more sense to look at those on an individual basis as opposed to redrawing district lines, which takes on a whole another uh, system and avenue of problems when we do that?
One of the other pieces of that discussion was most of those lines follow either highways or lot lines, but there are a couple that just are kind of random. So there was some discussion on looking at those different spots and seeing if there's a way to make those a little bit more logical for the families that are affected in those areas. Does anyone else have anything they would like to share this evening?
I guess I was just thinking, if anybody want to share some inputs, um, I guess anybody who voted not to, uh, renew that contract to P D B C, if any of you guys would be willing to share some factual data that something from our district that you can like anything negative you heard or anything that you saw come into our district from Scott Murphy that correlates with the website?
I voted, it just says, uh, if you want to know why I voted, is what you're saying?
No, I wanna, I was just curious.
I didn't vote against Scott Murphy.
Oh, yeah, you did.
Oh, I voted against P D B C.
In turn.
Of what they represent. I have morals and standards and what I believe and that's why. And I have constituents that also have come to me. And if you want to know why I voted, that is why I voted is because of where I stand.
I don't want to know why you voted. I was asking if you've seen any of that injected into our school district.
Sometimes I'm proactive rather than me not to.
Anybody else?
So then, okay, so then I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, am I correcting my interpretation of what you mean? That you haven't. You're just, you're, or see that. Am I, am I interpreting your, your answer correctly? Am I am I interpreting your your answer correctly?
I wasn't giving them.
Then you said you were proactive. So I'm I'm interested, I'm having to interpret your 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 answer to mean, no, you have not. But you're just.
Everything the way everything in the world is doing, anything could happen.
I'm I'm just saying, is that the way my correct my interpretation?
In a way.
In a way?
Um, again, like I said, the majority of the reason I voted the way I feel, and if that's a problem, sorry. But I have certain beliefs and certain standards. And I was just looking at what the website told me.
Just asking for clarification on my interpretation.
I was going right what the website said and what it brought to me. And I had a question that was not able to be answered because it does state on there about the six different.
That's that's not what he asked. I'm asking for clarification on my.
I like to do some clarification on too, so.
Basically, I think, I mean, you're basically voting on a conspiracy theory. There's not unless some unless one of you guys can show actually some sort of proof that what he brought into this district is correlated to what you're talking about on the website, I'd vote right along with you. So, I mean, unless we want to keep going every other meeting and chase rabbit trails and conspiracy theories and harm this people in our district, then we can keep doing that, but I got all the same emails as everybody else, and I haven't seen one negative thing. And you, unless one of you guys can say something that something negative about what he's done the last eleven years, other than the website. Well.
Okay, whether it be P D B C, um, I, okay, I I I agree with it that you're you're talking specifically about P D B C. We've had educators come up here, we've had educators explain to us and email us their support for um, and I know in B Phil's, I've received, I don't know if everybody else got the same emails, but they specifically pointed out that they have not had any hint any hint of any type of um political view that was even brought into anything that he's done. So I guess I I confer with Justin Hager and I'd like to be able to know factual as to what people are concerned with fashion.
Oh, I'm sorry that you do not have the same thought that I have. So each, you know, we we all have, that's why we live in the United States. We have our own individual opinions and we all give my own decisions.
And I truly appreciate it. There was, I I will sit here and be the first to be able to say I appreciate diversity. However, I also want to make a decision based on facts. And again, if there are facts, I will sit down with you and look at them and we can make an honest, factual decision. So if there are, I invite them to be brought up so then we can actually do that.
We made several decisions tonight that didn't have facts, but we felt that's the way it would be. I believe we started on um six, almost, excuse me, almost four hundred thousand dollars of coaching with no fact that we would fail since we already have trained people doing the work. They've already been here and trained some of our people.
And I appreciate.
And it was, and it was, there was an opinion that we would not be able to keep it up. But we, so there was a vote taken, even though I didn't agree. I didn't question anything. But it was a vote taken to spend the four hundred thousand dollars or whatever it's going to be, three hundred fourteen plus the thirty one thousand plus whatever the expenses are to do that cheap that coaching. That was an opinion that was voted on, that we would need that. So we we do it all the time.
Mr. Hager, I appreciate you asking the question because I sit here in frustration as well. Um, we are making decisions based on conspiracy theories. We've had multiple meetings where we have had discussions about P D B C and looking at websites and so forth. But tonight we heard from actual teachers and staff, a student, God bless him for coming forward and doing that. I know it's difficult, um, and have had nothing but positive. I've not heard one thing where things are being injected into schools that are inappropriate or politically based. Um, it is very difficult that we continue to make these decisions um without facts. Facts that would make us change our minds um and not support P D B C. You know, the same with um continuing the program at, you know, whatever the I M that's here, whatever it be, we literally heard teachers and staff standing before us contest to how much it had improved our school system and our district and our children. That's why we are here. That is why we are on this board is to base our decisions on facts, not on opinions, not on personal beliefs, not on conspiracy theories. And so I I too would like to hear if there are factual, there's some factual basis for making these decisions other than these theories and conspiracy and just personal opinions.
I ran through this board for our students and in doing so to support the staff that supports our students. And I strongly believe that as the support is our job to provide our staff with the best tools and as many resources as we can because they have a very difficult job that gets harder every single day. And so I am disheartened because I feel like we heard from the staff in our district and they requested Scott Murphy, not his company, not what the website said. And there are aspects of that website that do not relate to our district at all. And so I am disheartened by that. And I would also like to publicly apologize for not tabling this for another month because we are without our ninth board member. And I do not know if that would have changed the outcome of this vote, but it would have been the tiebreaker. And so I would like to apologize for not making that decision.
I just don't know how we can, like, use this as an example. How can we go into the future? Then next month you're gonna, I mean, if we, I don't know what we're gonna vote on, but something that we we vote on something every month that is in some sort of support for the students or the or their staff in somewhere. I mean, you might as well just vote no on it on at all. That's not even like we have one teacher saying, I don't really, I try to question what he brought to our district. We don't have one. And it's not like he's been here for two years, he's been here for eleven, eleven and thirty two years on this profession. You ain't got one person to back it.
For the people or the three other people voted too. Just look at me.
But you're sitting next to me.
I know.
And scoot down a chair too long there.
Is there anything else the board would like to discuss this evening? All right, we are going to move on to G, future, nevermind. Sorry, go ahead, Carlos.
I I would like to do a follow up to all those that did actually um from emails on page nine. I appreciate your advocacy for um our kids. Um, you know, I I I want you to know that at least for myself and I know from a couple others, um, your your job, number one is truly appreciated. Um, you're the valuable asset, what we do. And, you know, it's very disheartening to know that this decision um even with your your advocacy didn't go through. And I want you to know that I was very disappointed um very disappointed, right? So, but I do appreciate your guidance for that.
We probably should acknowledge the other people that spoke against it. Their children are just as important and their opinions and their uh beliefs are also, they they care about their children too. And so they have their thoughts and their beliefs and where they stand. And so I appreciate them for showing up as well and speaking up for um how they felt about uh this company that we are uh we're using. Thank you to those people too.
Any further discussion? G, future meetings. There will be a special board meeting for the annual twenty twenty three twenty twenty four fiscal year budget hearing and related budget items on Wednesday, July nineteenth twenty twenty three at eleven A M. So that is the special meeting that we had to reschedule. And we do need to ensure that we have quorum. So if anyone is unable to make that meeting, if you could please let us know tonight, would be preferable so we can reschedule that. Do we even have time to reschedule that with postings?
We need to find out a quorum on that, we need a quorum, that'll be, and then we we don't, then we can make any adjustments about if we have to.
It is at a weird time.
And I apologize, I, we will be at district baseball.
Okay. It's weird time to six.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you. The next regular board meeting will be Tuesday, August eighth, twenty twenty three at seven P M. The annual back to school in service for all district staff will be on Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty three at eight A M in the T H S auditorium. And the annual W S B A regional meeting will be hosted by Converse County School District Number One on Thursday, August thirty first, twenty twenty three in Douglas. Finally, our superintendent's report.
I have an update on staff. I'm going to share my screen real quick of our update. And we did have another couple of um positions still uh with the night's approval. Uh, there are still a couple out there that we still need to fill. For its high school art, um, we're still, of course, as we referenced earlier, speech, language, pathologists and school psychologists. But as you can see, uh, we definitely have had a reduction in the number of openings. So we'll continue to work on uh filling those. Uh, school lunch balances, you should have received a thank you letter um in regards to one of the uh uh donations uh that ultimately benefited families in Goshen County. Uh, anyone who's applied to the M V balances, also Lenny uh referenced uh their fundraising opportunities. Uh, so we appreciate all that work and our community uh in zeroing those school lunch balances across the district. Uh, my last item that I did have on my list, district cyber security insurance. This is the one I just, we wanted to make sure and uh point out as we had the renewal uh of that cyber security insurance of nineteen thousand. That was something that wasn't uh on that original, but had been added. And so that's one of those big pieces. As we know, when uh Eastern Wyoming College and their experience in that, the importance of having that coverage and the requirements of that. Um, the last one, I I just want to uh thank Scott Murphy uh for coming this evening uh and talking about his work uh with the districts uh and and what we have seen locally through that work. I greatly appreciate his time uh that he gave this evening and the information that he shared um in that conversation. So that is everything I have in regards to the superintendent's report. Also, anybody has any questions?
All right, then we will recess into our board work session for district strategic planning with W S B A. And I can't keep talking now because I'm getting them like.